At 7:15. We have a full agenda this evening. It has been posted. We're waiting. We have a couple of minutes before the Warren Solar Advisory Committee will be in for a minute, and then we have a public hearing at 7:30. So what I'd like to do, we have a public hearing and a continuation of another one at 7:45. But I'd like the board to do it this time, go down the agenda. And Kathy, you want to do five right away?
Yes.
Okay. For the board, we have to sign the decision for special permit 290 site plan 58. That's the B and B. We've had the discussion in the past few weeks with the applicant. They have been cleared by Board of Health. They have been cleared by the building inspector. Kathy has had the opportunity to sit down and write up the orders of conditions and the permit itself, all right, the decision. So we have closed the meeting. There was no more discussion to be had. We've all agreed on everything. So what I'd like you to do with the decision here, if you want to glance over quickly, go right ahead. Other than that, the signature page is on top. Please use your payroll signature, and we'll move on from there with that. It's a closed issue, and we're ready to move on. So I'd like to have a motion to close it and close the whole conversation on it. Is there a motion on the floor to close it? Any further discussion on the B and B permit?
I make a motion to close any further discussion on the B and B permit.
Motion's made second.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, with that, the decision's here.
There is a copy in each of yours.
So if you can review what I reviewed this morning, do so. Melissa, if you're ready to sign it, we can look at the paperwork from our right to our left.
You mean left, pardon?
Yeah.
Say give.
Yeah, vote.
Yeah. I want to let them answer.
Yeah, I'm fine.
There's a motion to vote, a vote on this.
I make a motion, we vote on the decision.
Right, motion made second.
Second.
Does the decision vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Now we want to sign.
Where's that address?
That's down on Laurel Lane, right off Southbridge Road, Tommy, going up the incline. That's the Bed Breckers down the hole.
Yeah.
He's putting three cabins in there, separate.
Oh.
Could have the B and B in three cabins. Each cabin would be around the, I'll sign the last one. Go ahead, and then just go to the back. Each cabin will be around the lake. That way, they'll be separate. They'll be separate of it. It's a camp cabin. All the meals and stuff will be served in the B and B area.
Does it lawn back there?
Excuse me?
There's a lake back there?
Oh, yeah. Take a look, Google it, or stop by the office. Kathy's got the paperwork, it's a field. Figure you were in Maine before you, before you left it.
Hey, yes.
Before you left.
Good time you didn't want to.
With a lunch train.
We're going down by Slay. Us is, us are on Slay. We're going down in the hay wagon in the fall. I'm sure that's something they'll probably think of down there.
Not really.
Yep.
Yep.
Is his name on there? Yep.
Well, that's going around at 7:20 right now. We'll keep up with the agenda. We have a discussion with the Warren Solar Advisory Committee on the question that you asked the board that was emailed out to the board this week. The board is requesting further information, further time to review that question, and any other questions that would be proposed in just a couple of weeks. Is that right, Bob? That's what the board would like. We'd all like to sit down and have a date on the side. That would be nothing but for discussion on that question you were asking and anything else.
Okay.
Okay.
What does that look like?
What does what look like? The questions? I have no idea. You've got to type it off.
Thank you.
What does what look like?
So, no, I'm at the process. You want a list of questions?
You had a question for us to discuss.
Right, so we're.
We discussed it and what the board is asking for time to sit down so five members of the board can.
Oh, so you guys can get together and discuss it.
And then, any questions that you think are pertinent right now.
Right.
That you're not stuck on, but that you're, you have accumulated and reached out to other towns, and you're discussing that, we'd like to be able to see that and discuss it too. Instead of having a short window, per se, that time is short, of having a short one night and say, hey, we need these by next Tuesday night. We'd like to have one night now with what you already have proposed, and that one question you asked us. And whatever you're discussing tonight, just say, these are the questions we're discussing. Okay? How do you feel about it?
Okay, so we sent this out last week on Tuesday, hoping that we could have an answer this evening.
And you just got the answer.
And the answer is a non-answer, so we're.
The answer is, we want to have a further discussion when the board can just meet it and discuss it further.
Okay.
So some of the board members have concerns. So we'd like to be able to get back to you with that concern between now and next week.
Okay.
That's all.
So next week?
Yeah, if you'd like a date. And any other questions you think may arise with what you're talking about now.
Would it help for us to send you a work in progress document?
Yes.
I think more details would be nice.
We can send you a work in progress document.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that right there, Bob? Yes.
Again, it's work in progress. We're changing, deleting, adding, deleting, adding, deleting, you know.
If you wish that way now, so that we can be on board when you get a little further into it, then we can have, that portion will be done, and then the other portion would come, and we'd be able to get that done too. Work in progress, work in progress is two words, so I'm saying the work in progress now.
Yep.
And then what you decide on how it's going to be written, that's fine, and anything else you're going to come up to.
Okay.
We just don't want to shortchange you for your deadline date.
We just, right.
So.
We just got it.
So, most people got it on emails, okay?
Oh, okay.
All right.
So.
So, that's one reason Sue just got it, because she doesn't have the email, which is fine. But, you know, the other board, well, the.
I got the question.
Right.
But it was just a pretty broad, I thought it was a pretty broad question. Yeah, I just wanted more details on what was going to, you were proposing to change in the bylaws and what.
Right, okay.
Stay intact.
So, this helps.
We didn't have this before.
What is that?
Notes.
Oh, the notes that I sent Kathy today. All right. Okay. I will, that may help. It's still, I'll send you a document.
Yeah, fine.
All right.
Get it to Kathy, and she'll get it out to everybody.
So.
Can it be done by the end of the week? Today's Tuesday, by Thursday or so?
I can send Kathy the document by Thursday.
Okay, good. Then we'll get it out to everybody, and then we'll, you know, next Monday night, we have another meeting, we can talk about.
No, we don't.
Well, we have one this Thursday for something else.
Yes.
On Monday, we do not, it's a holiday.
Right, I forgot.
And I'm on vacation, I will not be here now.
Right. So, we'll have another night next week that we'll discuss tonight, hopefully, and then we'll be able to get back to you with that stuff. All right? All right, okay. Anything else? Hopefully, everything's going well.
Things are.
Good.
Good, thank you.
No, that's the bigger, most important thing yet. Thanks, guys.
See you later, bye.
Bye.
See you later.
All right, we've got a few minutes. The board has a few minutes. So we've taken the decision now, invoice for Turley Publications, Public Hearings 291, 17634, is their motion?
I make a motion, we pay Turley Publications, public hearing 291, Kathy.
Okay, motion made second.
Thank you.
On paper.
Aye.
Aye. Kathy, go down. Come in. Please. Joe, go here.
Take two.
Tell you I love vacations. Hey, start it up. And let's go right down to, sign the proposal for Graves Engineering, number 12, please. Special permit 284, 285.
Those are two different ones.
5253 Correjo Road, CDT, and the amount of, two numbers, $4,800 and $4,400. Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we sign the proposal as written from Graves.
Four, for Graves Engineering. Yep, four Correjo Road, correct? All right, motion made second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eleven is the final? Or further?
Or further.
Understood.
Change of order? It's for the added work Graves did for, okay, Zinkarfa.
Yep. Very good.
There's two, this is the second inform.
Do they, do Graves have the one for, uh, Reed Street? Yep.
Yes. I believe so. Okay. They just didn't have time to have it.
No, no, that's understood.
Yeah, I'll look to that just now.
And then with that one going around, we have the signed change of order for Graves on special permit 281, 490, the amount of $2,200 for Little West Road and the applicants in copper. Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we sign the change order for Graves as written for special permit 281.
Very good. Motion made second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eleven is the final? Or further?
Or further.
Understood.
Change of order? It's for the added work Graves did for, okay, Zinkarfa.
Yep. Very good.
There's two, this is the second inform.
Do they, do Graves have the one for, uh, Reed Street? Yep.
Yes. I believe so. Okay. They just didn't have time to have it.
No, no, that's understood.
Yeah, I'll look to that just now.
And then with that one going around, we have the signed change of order for Graves on special permit 281, 490, the amount of $2,200 for Little West Road and the applicants in copper. Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we sign the change order for Graves as written for special permit 281.
Very good. Thank you. Motion made second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hey, is there a motion to sign Kathy's up's payroll?
I make a motion, we sign.
230 is written.
Kathy's payroll as written.
Well, it's made second.
Second.
I didn't hear too many real quick.
Yeah.
Second, then.
Yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just minutes, two. All right, in a minute here, we've got the public hearing, special permit 291, number three on the agenda there. All right, what I'd like to do at this time is open the public hearing on special permit 291 for Borrego Solar Systems. Borrego Solar System already has an active permit issued by the Planning Board for construction of the 37, 3,700 kilowatt ground-mounted solar energy field. Okay? It's on Cronyn Road, 355 Cronyn Road. What the applicant is requesting is a, is a special permit also. And the permit was issued based on the basis that it is the way the town had always done it, the board had always done, performed this other solar fields up until May 8th. May of 2018, we're issuing special permits. At that time, the town adopted a bylaw, special permit would be included. The town adopted that. Now Borrego's back asking for a special permit. There has been their lawyer and our lawyers talking about this. And the question that the board has for the applicant, Dave Albrecht, President, thanks Dave for coming in. Have the plans changed at all? Is this still the same project that Graves Engineering okayed that the board signed off on in, I don't know, when was it? May, June, or something of last year? Are they the same plans? Go ahead.
Yes. Well, good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all again. Dave Albrecht, engineer with Borrego Solar Systems, and with me tonight is Jared Connolly. He's our Vice President of Development in New England.
Yes.
The only difference there is, is there was a new requirement under the bylaw to be 150 feet away. If you recall, you issued a waiver with the support of the.
Advocate.
With Breezlands or.
Breezland, you folks drew up a legal document.
We have an agreement.
Of, we're going to plant a bunch of trees, and they were all happy, and they were very
happy with that. But at the time, we had submitted, and you approved site plan approval, it was, it wasn't 150 feet, I believe it was only 100 feet. So the only change we've made is that we've met that.
Yep.
That's the only change. Everything else is the same. We've spaced our roads a little differently, so the system size is practically the same. Yes. Other than that one change to meet the new bylaw, it is exactly the same.
Yet, the permit was issued prior to the new bylaw being enacted and passed on the ground floor, according to special permit, right?
I believe so, yes. I don't recall the dates.
Yeah, that's okay. Yes. The thing is, kind of like lost here, you're coming back for something that you don't need. What is the reason you need it? That's why it's gone to, and hey, I get them all. Your legal counsel has written quite an informative letter about special permits and statements, and then we have to pass it off to Town Council, all right, because it's a legal document. They have yet to come back to us.
I don't.
Okay? So, we're in limbo.
Well, to.
What's your thoughts, please?
Sure.
We're in limbo right now, Dave, because you can say, yeah, your lawyer's doing all the wording, and until Copelman and Page gets back to us, we really don't know what to do.
Yeah, we understand. This is, we're all, everyone's in quite a pickle right now.
Yeah.
Because you all felt, hey, I'm never going to see Dave Albrecht again.
No. Not really.
And it's now off to the building inspector, and he's ready to issue a building permit.
Yeah.
It's not just our in-house counsel, but it's also the system owner that we're going to be building the system for. It's their legal counsel as well that said, you know, like, you may have, this may be part of what you got in front of you.
Yeah, that's great.
But it says, Borrego's application for the large-scale energy solar facility was applied for, and hearing opened prior to the May 8th zoning change, therefore, the application was under section 3.25.5, in effect at the time of the application, which was October of 17. On the day of the application, that particular section allowed a large-scale energy solar district by right. A special permit was not required. It was the one section.
So, the issue, the issue.
Okay, now I'll speak up.
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
No, no, that's fine.
I didn't want to cut you off earlier.
No, sure, thank you.
I want to be respectful. When you were categorizing the timeline, and you made the statement earlier about we're coming back for something that we don't need, we would love to agree with that. The issue is with the timeframe, that the bylaw was changed relative to when we got our permit. The bylaw was actually changed in May of 2018, and we got our permit on July 31st. So it was the other way around of the order that you gave earlier, which was, which is why we want to comply with the bylaw that changed that took place in May, and get the special permit instead of the site plan review, which was required per the zoning bylaws when we applied, not when we got the permit.
Really? I'm lost. I'm lost, really.
Yeah, we got the permit before.
Yeah. There's an arcane mass general law that says that even though the building inspector's position is that we're grandfathered because of the zoning that existed when we applied, instead of when we got.
So what you're saying is the date on the permit put you into the effect of the new May, May bylaw, correct?
You actually have to have structures in place in order for it to be grandfathered.
The milestones that you have to meet in order to be grandfathered is have the construction started.
Okay.
Or have a building permit issued prior to the notice, the first, the notice of the first planning board hearing, which.
Okay.
Which we, we're two months out of sequence there.
Yeah, well, it's obvious, you're bringing that up. It's a pretty simple answer to me, and I think some in the board, although I don't know what legal counsel, why hasn't been answered by them, because as soon as you questioned it, Dave, it went that way.
Oh, no.
And you've got counsel and talking about it, new to us, so I don't know how to handle it. I don't think the rest of the board has any idea. And I have a very special meeting with legal counsel on Thursday, and that's a question I'm going to ask right there.
Well, I think all we would want is, is the best way to handle it is just to take our application for the site plan review. It's the same, it's the same project, except with the one difference that Dave mentioned about the setback.
Yeah.
And issue the special permit instead of the site plan review, which we already have existing, and the building inspector is willing to issue a building permit off of it. We just want the letterhead and everything on that same permit to say special permit instead of site plan approval, and that's it.
As well as site plan approval. We need both.
Yeah.
We already have one.
Yeah, and due respect to the townspeople who voted at that meeting and who attended the public hearings that were held about it. There may be, and we can look at now, seeing you're opening the door, further restrictions with the special permit, right? We have that opportunity. You're asking us now for a special permit. Dave and the property owners all came up with, agreed upon, there is, you know, a order of conditions on the back of your, your plans and the permit, yet with the special permit, if someone wishes the question, you're opening the door for questions. You're opening the door for someone here or another person that comes in and say, hey, I understand you're opening up the Borrego thing again. You know, what can we do for this? So, you know, that's.
That's why we're here to have that hearing, right?
Right, that's why we're here. We understand there is a risk. We understand that.
Okay. And with that, we had no idea how this was going. So, with all respect to the townspeople and to the board, I think we should continue this until I speak with legal counsel Thursday night, my special Valentine's Day dinner.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, and, yeah, can of beans. And get their answer, and then we'll continue this. If they say no, and we'll continue it so that people know that this is being done. This is here tonight in respect to the special permit, how we figured it out, and I thank you for the answer, because you, we never knew this.
True.
All right, 20, I mean, the law says it. It wasn't brought to our attention, and it could have been rectified very easily six, seven weeks ago, or longer, when you folks brought it to the attention.
Yes, we had hoped so, but we understand sometimes.
And we have no control over what goes on.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So, with that, I'll have an answer on Thursday night. I will. And what do we have right now? Can we look at?
Two sub divisions.
The 20, yeah, the 28th, or what's the date after? Because we're jammed, I mean, Monday night here, so.
Well, we were, kind of, probably put the 27th for a little rest.
Okay.
The 4th of March, we have.
All right, no, let's put it with Little West. Turn around at the beginning, please. Board agree?
Let me ask a question, though.
Yeah.
Because something that you said got me to thinking, that, you know, you, it's a, this is a new application for a special permit for an existing project. How does the moratorium act to that, that we now have in place? So that's the only other thing that I'm thinking about.
The project is already in the works.
That's the way I would think about it, but I think it's just another question for legal.
The project permit has been issued. The project permit has been issued prior to.
When I would.
Okay, it's the special permit.
Which would be a new application for.
For a special permit, not for a project permit.
For a project.
Okay? That's the way I'm going to look at it.
That's right. That's the way I see it, though, but I just want to err on the side of caution and not.
Yeah.
It's a project, it's in the works, done.
Not de-sug to the lawyer turns out and says, no, you can't do that.
Suddenly, the application was in prior to, yeah, the zoning change that it must have required, yeah.
But the permit is dated after. Okay, that's a legal.
The new law.
That's where lawyers get the big bucks to look at that.
And there's nothing in our law that explains grandfathering.
No.
So even if it was before we changed it.
Yeah, that's what he said.
He specifically said that.
If it was in.
If it was in the fore.
Yeah, Jeff Bill.
Bill.
Bill. I remember that, but now this is a legal question by a lawyer, and that's why it's upstairs.
Just makes me question other projects.
Yeah, it can. Yep. Again.
Yes, just so I'm clear, I was just going to ask the, so the issue that you want to discuss with your, with your counsel on Valentine's Day, is that, that's this issue about whether you have the ability to issue the special permit during this time period, where I understand you guys have a moratorium going on right now?
Well, that would be, that would be a second part of the question. The question is, do you, you know, you're saying by law you need it, and we're saying, well, okay, if it was, we didn't know, not any of us knew that the permit was signed after that date, May, we signed in July. Because with all due respect to both parties, we continue with conservation. The meeting was coming up on a timeframe. The applicant and the board all agreed that once the process was still working along, we would continue it. It could have been settled about four months earlier, all right, and everything would have been that way. So it was a continuance that was agreed upon by both parties that led us into that, this July date.
Right.
Now, I did not know, and neither did any of the board members, and I only think Kathy could say that the permit was signed in July. You have it, so it was.
I know, it was about that time.
The date on the permit is 7:31, and the bylaw changed sometime in, yeah, May 8th.
Yeah, okay.[1544.12] Okay, it's the special permit-
Which would be a new application for a special-
For a special permit, not for a project permit.
For a project.
Okay, I, that's the way I'm gonna look at it.
That's right, that's the way I see it, but I just wanna err on the side of caution and not-
Yeah.
It's a project, it's in, in the works, done.
Not de-sug to the lawyer turns out and says, no, you can't do that.
Suddenly the application was in prior to, yeah. This, the zoning change that it must have required, yeah.
But the permit is dated after. Okay, that's a legal-
A new law.
That's where lawyers get the big bucks to look at that.
And there's nothing in our law that explains grandfathering.
No.
So even if it was done before we changed it-
Yep, yeah, that's what Bill said.
He, he specifically said that-
If it was in four.
If it was in the four, it followed those-
No, yeah.
Bill.
Bill, he told us.
I remember that, but now this is a legal question by a lawyer. And that's why it's upstairs.
Just makes me question other projects.
Yeah, it can. Yep.
Again. Yes. Just so I'm clear, I, I was just gonna ask the, what, so the issue that you wanna discuss with your, with your counsel on Valentine's Day? Is that, that's this issue about whether, whether you have the ability to, to issue the, the special permit during this time period, where I understand you guys have a moratorium going on right now?
Well, that, that would be, that would be a second part of the question. The, the question is, do you, you know, you're saying by law you need it, and we're saying, well, okay, if it was, we didn't know. Not any of us knew that the permit was signed after that date, May, who signed in July. Because with all due respect to both parties, we continued with conservation. The meeting was coming up on a timeframe, the applicant and the board all agreed that once the process was still working along, we would continue it. It could have been settled about four months earlier. All right, and everything would have been that way, so it was a continuance that was agreed upon by both parties that led us into that, this July date.
Right.
Now, I did not know, and maybe did any of the board members, I only think Kathy could say that the permit was signed in July. You have it, so it was.
Yeah.
I know, it was about that time.
The date on the permit is seven thirty-one, and the bylaw changed sometime in, yeah, May eight.
Yeah, May eight, yeah, okay.
I was trying to say, well, our attorney didn't-
Say, say so, and say you'd issue it.
It's a, it's a pretty simple part of the bylaw. I mean, I shouldn't say part of your bylaw, it's part of state law.
State law.
State law, it's, it's, it's one sentence, I'm not sure why it takes, it's taking so long, but, you know, we understand it, it's taking time, so.
I, I won't apologize, I can't say anything, because we were left hanging. And they've had it for a while. So why do we do that? And we'll do it for the twenty-fifth?
Okay, what time? Because we have the four, two, four B, seven thirty, and eight, we have Little Rest Road.
We get the answer, it's gonna be quick and easy unless we got a problem.
But then at the beginning?
I would do it in, we're starting at seven fifteen, seven twenty, just like, seven twenty by seven thirty, we have another one, correct?
Seven thirty, seventeen o'clock, and-
Yeah, seven fif- uh, seven fifteen to hear for the opening, seven twenty we'll start, you should be walking. Because, and, and we'll let you know as soon as I know from the, from legal counsel, Kathy sends you an email.
Wonderful.
Okay, and that should be Monday morning, because the office is closed Friday.
Right.
Okay? And, oh, yeah.
It'll be Monday.
Kathy?
It'll be here.
It's a holiday.
I'll have, I'll do it Thursday night.
Thursday night.
Oh, this, this coming Thursday night?
I'll have to.
Okay.
I'm not coming in next week.
Okay.
Oh, you're not in at all next week?
No.
Good luck to you.
Um, yeah, we'll do it Monday night.
School week issue week?
As soon as we get out of the meeting, one way or another, you'll hear from us Friday morning.
Okay.
Okay, all right?
Wonderful, so we're continuing to the twenty-fifth at seven twenty?
Right, and you'll find out the answer from legal counsel, so that when you come in with the week two-
So if we have to work anything out between then and the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, we'll do that three times of a week, okay? All right, thank you.
Right.
All right, well, that's it, fellas, I mean, that's the best we can do, okay, yeah? All right, thanks.
So a little quick question. Have, a vote has been notified?
Yes.
They have?
It was, this was a public hearing, it went in the newspaper, I just said.
Does, does the board, doesn't the board have to open the hearing and then continue it now?
Well, open it and gonna continue it, yeah.
Okay, all right.
I'm continuing it until the twenty-fifth.
Okay, I just didn't hear-
No, no, we're gonna finish that.
I think you all vote, though.
Yeah, yeah, I will.
All right.
All right, there's no one here this evening that, that's gonna question it. Because any of those that were have already know, know about it.
Right.
So now we're just gonna continue it now till the twenty-fifth at seven twenty.
All right.
With my answer and Kathy, or the board's answer from legal counsel Thursday night getting to you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Excuse me, I'm fine, you okay?
Yep, I hope your meeting goes really short, is really short, I'm just saying.
Yeah, we will. All right, thanks, fellas.
Appreciate it.
Apologize for others wronged to them. All right, we're three minutes over, seven forty-five, continuing public hearing. Special permit, two eighty-one, site plan, forty-nine. Syncarf for Capital LLC, the applicant has requested. Construction operator, four point nine eight megawatt, we are on up to seven hundred and eighty seven, the public is located on Little Rest Road. Where's Travis?
No Travis tonight.
I spent a whole weekend going over it. No, I found the numbers, I got everything. I tell ya, it, it ain't easy, but everything, everything was found in here, the questions that we get asked, okay? I got, everything was, yeah, when you get 'em, it's mind-boggling. And the discussions we've been having have been eye-opening. And when you go back through everything that is composed in all this today, that we get, you look at them at first, say, oh, crap. Then you look at them down the road, and you start going through them, you can see how, yes, there's been a lot of work done, a lot of soils and everything else done. Uh, as far as your meeting, all the standards federally, statewide, DEP-wise, stormwater runoff-wise, based on the applicant's thoroughness, it's there, without a doubt. The few questions that legal counsel referred to, a couple of court cases, they referred to. I am a ten-digit midget, they don't work, they're knuckles and bent, but I finally figured out how to get the court cases. Yes, the court cases that were brought up, I reviewed. We're not between a rock and a hard spot. We are here to represent the town and the townspeople to the best of the ability and ask questions. One thing I will say to the townspeople and the residents, thank you for the input, the concerns to the applicant, thank you for being thorough. Thank you for reaching out, as you spoke last week, on, on ideas and parts of the projects here. What that is?
Oh, come on.
I gotta do it, Bob.
Can't see.
This is how much research I did. Here, Sam, take a look at this, don't read those, my right hand. But what is that? Quick, just show it to Carter, show it to your lawyer, now that's enough, you see it?
That's a Syncarf, is what that is.
That's right, baby, I looked.
Yeah.
I went through the dictionary, I get on that line. Herbaceous plant. All right, better known as everlasting. Found where? South Africa, green plant. But, you know, what we're, what we wanna do is, we had so much input from everybody. We've had our concerns from the townspeople, the town and the board, thank you for answering the questions, thank you for enlightening and moving on with things. We're not getting picky, we're not withholding. We wanna make sure we have our answers. Graves, I think, has done well. They have a few other things they're gonna get back to us on. This evening, you, there's no more that we can really talk to you guys about, we have everything. Sam, all your scientific numbers and facts, we got 'em, all right? And we've gotta take time to sit down and talk amongst ourselves, the board, okay? And with, with, with those presents, present this evening from, from town and the voters, you've had your input, and we're not beating dead horses, we're at the end. We need to look at everything now, and what the board is requesting right now is a continuation of this for two weeks, till what date did we pick?
Uh, no, the twenty-fifth.
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 The twenty-fifth, okay? And by that time, the board's gonna be able to have accumulated all the information, sat down, talk about it. And we hope to close the meeting, hope to close it on the twenty-fifth, okay? We can't go any further, because there's really nothing there. You have supplied everything, they have supplied everything. And the board has not had the opportunity to sit and put everything together. Okay? So we're asking between both part, Tom, you have the floor, sir.
Go ahead, finish with your sentence.
No, you have the floor, because I think I know where you're gonna go, go ahead.
All right, um, for those gentlemen, Thomas Woodrow, Warren Highway Surveyor. I did get a copy of the plans from, who do you, I think, uh, early this last week, just haven't had a chance to review it. Upon reviewing it a little bit further, I just had a couple of questions on the final water quality basin. I see there's an invert that's gonna go connect into town drainage, but doesn't have a depth on that invert, on the plans that I see, unless my plans just don't have them.
Go ahead.
Uh, also, correct me if I'm wrong, it looks like everything's gonna be traveling south off the driveway entrance into the swale.
Yeah. Should I poke a plane?
No, no, yes, no, go right ahead. If you wish.
Just think while we're all in one room.
Perfect.
Those might be a little bit bigger, too, so it'll be good.
Right, so the area Mr., area Mr. Woodrow's referring to is here, this is Little Rest Road, this is the entrance to the proposed facility. And we've got a stormwater water quality basin here at the entrance. So, uh, we have, uh, two six-inch pipes that allow water to leave that basin when it gets to a certain elevation. And when it leaves the basin, out those pipes, it goes, it's got two inverts, the invert of the pipes leaving the basin, and the invert of the pipe coming out of the basin. And then it just dumps into the existing swale that's along Little Rest Road. And, uh, the water in that location goes, actually runs north, just for a short distance, a few feet, before it goes into an existing drop inlet. So, and that, that water is water that's already going to that swale from everywhere up slope. It all flows to the east, gets into these swales, they do a nice job, they've done a nice job maintaining those, they're very, they're very functional. And so we're not adding any water, we're actually reducing water, because this stormwater basin detains the water. So, when the peak of the storm has passed, water will be infiltrating into this here, but also be leaving the basin and getting into the existing swale, which goes into existing drop inlet, drop inlets, drainage structure with a concrete top. It's open, free flow into the basin, into the, uh, drop inlet. And there's a number of those along Little Rest Road, as you know.
Right.
So, yeah, we, we've got inverts on that, on the two six-inch pipes, on the inlet side, and then the outlet side.
And how, how, how much water will that hold before it comes out of the inlet? And what, what is the actual size of that retention, that water quality basin?
So the bottom elevation is contour elevation nine forty-nine. And then the invert of the two six-inch pipes is nine fifty point five-five, so about a foot and a half of water.
And what's the actual size of the retention basin? Something you may not be aware is that the, there's a lot of ledge in that location. And it is a big area of, um, drainage issues with heavy flooding, there's, there's almost so much water coming out that the drainage isn't adequate to take it. So I'm concerned about the additional water that you're gonna be putting in there.
We're not putting additional water.
How do you explain that, that you're not, because you got a renewed surface of a road that's gonna be taking water and putting it into a retention pond?
Because right now, these, this map shows the watershed areas that contribute water off the site. So this watershed area two S, this water all makes its way down to Little Rest Road. In the post-development scenario, this water gets captured by this swale, which brings it down to this stormwater basin, where it's collected and recharged. So we're taking this much acreage out of the watershed that contributes to Little Rest Road.
Okay.
So I think there's a chance we'd be improving conditions.
Nope.
Uh, this, this basin is, um, not in much of a cut at all. Uh, in fact, on the Little Rest roadside, it's a couple of feet of fill to make the berm on the backside, so the ledge, unless it's, uh, only a foot down, shouldn't be much of a concern, if, if, if it does happen to fall there.
So what, what's the recet, what's the size of that basin, and how much water is that gonna hold before it comes out?
It's about forty by thirty-five. For the length and width dimension.
And the total depth on that?
Well, the water's gonna start leaving at, uh, at elevation nine fifty point five-five, with a foot and a half of water depth. But if, uh, let's say someone were to block the pipes, it's gonna spill over at nine fifty-two, so that'd be three feet maximum depth. Again, this was part of stormwater that was reviewed by Graves Engineering.
Uh, Kathy, just stand there for a second. Tom?
Um.
Satisfied or continue on, please?
I'd like to see that retention pond a little bit deeper.
On what basis?
On the basis that you're gonna be discharging the water into a catch basin that's town property.
Right, the, the water we're discharging is already going there today, and we're reducing the amount of water that's going there. And Graves confirmed that by their review of our stormwater analysis.
Yeah, there's, there's gonna be, there's different aspects that's gonna change with this done. I mean, the, the road is, yes, it's gonna be porous, but eventually it's, it's gonna run across, run across.
All that's been taken into account in our calculations. Our calculations simulate post-development conditions, so gravel has a different runoff than, than woods, and, and grass has a different runoff than woods, all of that has been taken into account, into our computations, which were reviewed by Graves.
How far apart are the check dams on this swale? Hundred feet it looked like, or a little more than that?
Uh, about forty-five feet, I'm sorry, fifty feet.
The only thing I'd like to see is maybe that retention pond either a little bit bigger or a little bit deeper. Just to hold a little bit more water, so it can recharge before it gets into the swale more. Like I said, I have an issue with water there, just, when we get a heavy storm and it comes through the walls, and I've had four inches of water running down the road. Further north, but it's still gonna contribute to it.
Ms. Wall? Steve's pulling up, please pull it up, Carter McKinnon from Syncarf. One thing that we talked about the last week, which we would do for this basin as well, which we're doing for the basins on the inside, is conditions and maintenance under monitoring. So I hadn't thought about it for this one, we're gonna put cameras in the back. It's up to the board, if you like a camera in the front, there's reasons for that and reasons against it, you know, right on the road there. So, the other thing with that, we are gonna do onsite inspections, um, you know, monthly for at least for its two years, and that one's right by the road. So, it's easy to inspect, to drive by, um, and we're gonna do that and just make sure that it's big enough. Just to agree with the engineering that Graves reviewed. So, minimum two years, and then the board will, you know, like, walk.
You brought that up.
Those are just my concerns.
Anything else? Refer to it.
I just wanna point out for the record, water only leaves this basin through those design pipes in more than a twenty-five-year storm event. So you have to have a hundred-year storm event for water to go, to, to go out those pipes. So that means it's hardly ever leaving that basin as it's designed. Already.
Derek, water. Regarding this? Yeah.
What if you just move a couple inches the inverts, so he's happy that, you know, you're gonna contain more water into your, into that pond?
That's all we're talking about, I don't think we're gonna argue with you, but-
I'd rather see it a little bit bigger versus change the inflow, just to hold more water to seep in.
Okay, I mean, I just, I just, I just wanna get all this information, get it on a list, and do it, and be done. You know, like-
Okay, um, Tom's asking, it's the highway, he knows his roads, he knows water, as well as obviously you.
We respect his opinion.
And, and both, and we, also. Is it, and this is just a question, how drastic is it to make it big? How, kind of, it, can you answer?
From what I've heard, it comes down to ledge, right? So-
Well, Tom brought up ledge, where is the ledge? That's why when I spoke with Travis in last week about the depth, the soils and everything else, you know, ledge is everywhere, pretty much, and do you know where that ledge is there?
We didn't encounter ledge.
There might not even be any.
Tom, that, okay, and then, uh, uh, your comment was you didn't encounter, right?
Right, I mean, we, we can maintain that depth and expand, you know, the, the linear dimension-
Look, look at him that way, I have, I integrate-
Well, I just wanted to be respectful to you.
Yeah, that's fine, no.
You know, we can expand it length and width-wise to get the extra volume, we don't have to go deeper, it's all about the depth. But I just, I think the point that I'm trying to make, and maybe, maybe we didn't set up the framework of, of the objective of the meeting tonight, but, you know, we feel like we've addressed everything that's been thrown at us, and, uh-
And I said that at the beginning, yeah.
And if this highway superintendent got the plans when and looked at them, and he's asking a question if it could be done, yes or no, that's all. Yep.
Okay, you've addressed everything, and he is showing a concern, I think that's a fair-
Yep, and, and-
And I think our, our concern with it is, you know, we'll modify it, Graves will agree again, because they already agree with it as is. And it's just another iteration when Graves already agrees that it's the right size.
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, it's, it's one thing between a twenty-five and a hundred-year storm, and an inch of rain when there's two feet of snow in the ground. You know, I've had roads flood this last spring, I haven't seen flood in seven years, granted, it's only seven years, but I got plenty of drainage issues in town, I assure you, I just don't want anymore.
Definitely, we don't wanna contribute to any, any of your issues. I think about that point I was trying to make, Mr. Chairman, is that we'll do that. If that's where we are, if there's anything else, we just wanna know.
Yeah.
Do you have a sense of how much larger you'd like it?
Could hold another two hundred gallons. I mean, it's, it's not a lot. Just something that would make it a little bit bigger to have that adequate runoff. Because, I mean, the check dams is fantastic that close
Yep.
to slow it down, that's gonna recharge it, I just think it's, it's not a big- I just think it's, it's not a big deal to make it a little bit bigger beyond design.
Yep, I just wanna make sure that, you know, come back, give another meeting, and then, you know, and not just, not you, but anyone has a right to say, how about this, how about this? We want, we honestly wanna work with you, we've been, continue to do that, we just wanna get all...
Yeah, and so do we, and I made that statement earlier too. We're not gonna be the dead odds, we've been dragging, I shouldn't say dragging, use that expression. We've been working to get it to the point, and that's why I said tonight, people, thank you. Thank you applicant, Tom had a question.
Yeah, we've been communicating, and I know, you know, he's been reviewing.
So if we'll make that change, and we're, we're back, I think it's the twenty-second or fifth. Just wanna make sure we can get it to Graves in time, because they'll have to review, even though it is a small change.
I'll call Graves in the morning.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, if it's designed now, I don't see another, where they're gonna review it.
I'll call Graves in the morning, see if we can get it, get it right into them, and I'll ask if they can put it on, because this is what we're, how we're gonna handle it, okay?
Great, thank you.
We'll go back to it. All right. Tom, that it?
That's good, thank you.
Okay, so with that, we're gonna move on, right? We're gonna move this, continue this until the twenty-fifth, Gary? What do you got, early?
Um, eight o'clock is the last for the Form Bs.
Derek, I'm sorry, go.
I had a comment from Graves Engineer after you guys left. He suggested that if we could ask you guys for copies of the NIPs report.
The NITDs permit?
Yep.
Yeah, of course. So that's a construction phase permit?
He said, you know, asking you for a copy of those reports, it's not gonna cost any more extra work to you, because you have to do the...
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it's a construction phase reporting process, so once, that can't, that can't begin until construction started. But then when, when those reports are issued, either on a per-storm basis or a seven-day interval, whatever is elected under the NITDs program, you'll be provided copies.
Okay, if, for everybody here, that'll be added in the orders and conditions at the end, that a copy once done onsite gets in that way, okay? Follow them in the exposure, is that right? That's when it does start.
We were just talking about it, but they weren't here, so I thought it wasn't fair.
No, that would be fine, okay? So, Sam, yep, okay. We'll continue it till the twenty-fifth, yes?
Just, if I may, a couple things since last meeting, even though it was only a week ago. We did speak with the fire chief, and we did adjust the plan slightly for turnarounds for him. He wanted to get his thirty-eight-foot tanker truck in there, so we used the, I forget what it's called, turn, turn point?
Auto turn.
Auto turn software to simulate that, and it did adjust. So it doesn't change the stormwater calps.
Right, it's really about these radiuses here and here.
Okay.
Right, and, you know, every turnaround, we modeled his apparatus.
Going through there, yeah.
Minor, minor adjustments for the chief, the safety side, thank you. Anything else, Carter, go ahead.
No, just that I shared some information, I did post that website that you were looking for, so that's up, if you have other questions, I can post answers there, got it? If you have questions on that, happy to talk about it too.
And Doc, where are you gonna put the cameras, feedbacks?
So that'll, it won't be right on that link, that'll be a different feed that will work out, how to share that with you, but...
I just wanna have something so the public, you know, can check and see themselves that everything's okay, or if there's a problem, they can report it right away.
Yeah, it might not be that exact link, but we'll set one up for you.
Tom, you had a question?
Yes, just wondering what they anticipate their construction entrance width to be, if it's gonna be a ninety-degree to Little Rest or on an angle?
Well, so we'll use this as, as is shown on the plan, and we've got a hundred-foot-long crushed stone construction entrance, like you typically see under, you know, today's construction standards. So we'll utilize that, it'll be, from my eyeball, it looks to be ninety degrees to Little Rest.
What's the width of that? Are you just gonna have smaller trailers coming with materials?
Generally not bigger trailers. The biggest trailers you'll get on a job like this are the ones that deliver the panels, and you'll get one that delivers probably the inverter, you know, and the racking. So you'll probably get, you know, maybe half a dozen large, bigger trailer truck deliveries. The width at the entrance is about thirty feet. So, you know, if we were doing something with Mass Highway, they'd wanna make sure it was at least thirty feet. We've got, we've got some roundings there. You know, if a truck, the back wheels of the, of the trailer, you know, make a rut, it would fix.
You know, if it's a long track there with a decent-sized trailer, it's an old road of ninety-degree swing.
Yeah, and as you know, a lot of it has to do with the width of the road that they're already traveling on, for that ability to kinda make that oversteer and turn. So, the other be construction personnel onsite, flaggers, all those things for, for those moments of, you know, traffic control, but...
Yeah, I'm not concerned with that, just making the swing to get in there.
James, go.
Thank you. One, one very minor question. You, you are doing the construction, your company, isn't that what you've told, well, someone that works for you?
Correct.
You oversee it, you don't abandon it, you've told us that.
And then we operate.
You have any opposition to notifying the planning board of your project meetings onsite, so that one of us might attend?
No, not at all.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Carter, you have something else you wish?
No, I believe that's it. Just between now and two weeks from now, if there are additional questions from residents, happy to answer them.
We'll give them to you if they come into Cathy, or they come in off the wall. We'll give them to you, we're not gonna short-change you, you'll have them before you come back in.
Great, thank you.
We can do that. Kat, last, you're looking at me for the time. What's on it, who's on first?
The last Form B is at eight o'clock. We gave the first one at seven-thirty, so there's a half hour between the two. Do you want a half hour for the second one?
No, I don't think so, they're Form Bs, all they have to do is be accepted. We talked about that, it's not a discussion. The application is filled out, we accept them, then the whole, what goes on. I will look at the applicant, the applicant is also expressing a Form B, correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
And they are at eight o'clock.
All right, leave them at eight. Leave them at eight, and right after them, while they're here, we'll go right into this. Okay? We'll probably be able to get a turn back, okay? All right, so with that, this meeting, reference to the little rest road, will be continued till the twenty-fifth at eight o'clock, okay? And anything that comes up, we'll get to, and I'll call Graves in the morning.
Sounds good, thank you so much.
All right, thanks folks, thanks for coming in again tonight.
Did they send your copy?
Not yet, I had you approve it earlier.
Yeah. I can send your copy?
And I understand you...
Thank you, I'm gonna try. We'll be doing emails, I think, on my vacation.
Seven and eight, budget annual report. What do you wanna do? We put it off last week, you wanna keep going?
We can't put it off.
Can't put it off, go for it, Kathy, present it, where is it?
Because we all have work. I wanted to add an extra hour and a half to my weekly, twelve point five to fourteen hours a week.
Why only an hour and a half? Why not make it even fifteen hours?
I don't know, because, yes. That's what I do for the building, the parks.
But then, my only question is, Kathy, is in the same breath, you're asking for twenty spare hours in case you run over.
Because we might not have this issue next year, this is the budget for twenty, so that's why...
I, I just would think that, you know, fifteen hours a week is really what you need to do your job, then that's what we should do, and if you don't use the fifteen hours, well, then that's fine. At least then they're there, and you're not having to borrow from something, and then you borrow it all out, because it got super busy, and then we're back asking for a rat or something from finance to get more hours. I've always, as a manager, I've always been of the mind to ask for what you need, and maybe a little bit more, knowing that you can always give it back at the end, you don't have to use it. But when you borrow, you know, you say, and then I'd like this chunk of hours, because I know there's gonna be nights that I have to work late, because I have a meeting, and I've had to work all day, and there's four people in my office. And then you run all of that out, you don't have an outlet, because you've blocked yourself into an hour and a half. So if you need two and a half hours or three hours a week, we ask for that, it'll incorporate the twenty hours, and then you don't have to ask for two things, you only have to ask for one. And then not only that, when we, when we talk about what your job does next year, when a lot of this tends to settle down, or at least we think it might settle down, you may find that having that fifteen hours is really what you need to keep up with things in the office. And so now you're not asking for anything extra at that point, it's already incorporated in your salary.
That's a lot of hours, though.
Kat?
An hour and a half, it's already seventy-eight hours plus twenty-one.
That's a whole year, though.
Yeah.
It's two thousand and eighty in a forty-hour week.
But we might not be as busy as...
And then so you don't have to use, you don't have to use those hours, right?
Is it better to have and not use, or is it not to have and beg to have a few? So if the board wishes, after this, we wish that it goes this way, you gotta be happy about it. You've got no exception here.
And they can always deny it.
Yeah, well, yeah, they can. And then again?
Yeah, then they come back and tell us that they wanna just put a pool of hours aside for you, and if that's the way that they want them, they're in charge of the budget, then, you know, we're fine with that. But I think for your protection, it's nice to have it there.
Yeah, because you're gonna have to take off most of the summer.
What do you think that's fine, so... You're taking the trailer out, pumping the tires, oh, done. Okay, we'll go with that one.
So thirteen hours?
That works.
And that's an agreement.
I think you need to make sure that's important, that it works for you.
It'll be worth that, we'll report as agreed. We need to listen to go through the fifteen. Okay, all right, Kat, the annual report?
Now, that's gonna go in too.
I know, everybody's got a copy of it, did anybody take a look at it yet?
No, I didn't see it, what did I?
It's in the very back.
It's in the very back.
Very back in the folder, Tom, thank you.
Thank you.
Tom?
Still front folder.
Reference, reference the Form B, be there on the twenty-fifth, okay? Because that's the other project that's planned for, and it might go from dirt to hot ball. Might go from dirt to road, to Wayne Road.
Yeah, that's the whole...
So that'll be discussed on the twenty-fifth, so you might wanna be here for that presentation on that too.
All right, thank you.
All right, have a good night, thank you.
You too.
Yeah, go ahead and take a look at the annual report.
My office is re-elected, the very last sentence.
Everybody have a chance to review the annual report? Melissa found one little typo, but other than, that's all right with everybody, the way it is?
Usually my computer tells me when I have a typo.
That's a real word, so...
That's a real word, there's no typo, you just use the wrong word.
So with that, accept the annual...
Yeah, sometimes it gives you...
Is there motion to accept the annual report as written to be presented to the selected firm or version?
I make a motion to accept the annual report as written with the correction at the end.
Motion made, second? Second. Possession, add, all in favor? Minutes of fourteenth and seventeenth of January and fourth of February.
Only a man can vote for the seventeenth of January.
Let us know. Seventeenth of January first, please.
Motion to approve the minutes of January seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, is written.
Got a second, Nick.
He's kidding, I think it's...
A second too? You can't, you're not there.
Yeah.
Derek's still reading it, and I read it, let Derek finish. Good, second it, Derek? All in favor? Three guys. Three amigos.
Three amigos.
Three amigos, there it is. All right, now, February fourth.
I'm out.
My comments were on the email, just to add what Graves Engineer suggested that we, conditions, ask for copies of the NIPs report. And also he mentioned that it was a good practice of hiring engineer to go and inspect those, compare the reports to the inspections, and just pay by the applicant.
That, yes, that'll be part of the orders and conditions on the special permit.
And, but I'm saying that for all the projects.
For everything, yes, oh, yeah.
All, because everybody who has a project, and you, that you have, that you alter the land for more than five acres, I think, or for more than one acre, they have to do a NIP. So everything that does something, you know, so basically all the houses are not included, but something big that includes excavation or something from the dirt, from the ground, they have to do a report.
And that's the state that requires that?
Yeah, so we should get copies of that.
I think on Spring Street, isn't that what, at the end, you guys?
Yes, we did, yep, on Spring Street, yep.
Because there was so much trouble with the basins not being done according to the plans.
And that was, that was a bone of contention with the applicant too. We did get the reports, even though they were late. But we, that'll be brought up again when it comes down to the special permit and the orders and conditions. All right, let's see, February fourth's minutes, Bob, it stains on the fourth, and the ladies exchange?
No.
No, not on the fourth, on the seventeenth, too. But on the fourth, it'll be Bob, the rest of us go ahead.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of February fourth, except you don't have Melissa's name anywhere.
I didn't catch that, I was here. Good catch. Oh, I left you out.
I'll just retype it tomorrow and get you in there.
Motion's been made with the adjustment to be made. Other than that, motion made second.
Second.
Second. Again, they'll be corrected as far as Melissa's name added, nothing else heard. Motion made second, and all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Bob, it's next.
I do have him on the absentee list.
I saw that.
Anything else from anybody here on the board? Mr. Broell, any comment? None? Kathy, all set?
I think so.
All set, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made second, all in favor, aye. Thank you.
Maybe the twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth.